Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, December the 3rd, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right. Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Suebert.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, November the 19th, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have three pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $73,501.68. The floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the wastewater claims dated December the 3rd, 2018, in the amount of $73,501.68.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, also vote aye and the motion carries. We have no unfinished or new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have nothing.
If not, I'll ask for motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
The meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting after we reset the recorder. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beech Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, December the 3rd, 2018. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan.
Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Suebert.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, November the 19th, 2018. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have nothing.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. This evening, Board, we have 25 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $969,949.16. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the corporate claims dated December the 3rd, 2018, in the amount of $969,949.16.
I'll make said motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This evening, we have no unfinished business carried over from the previous meeting. We have, under new business, we have two items tonight, 2019 liability, workman's comp renewal, and civilian paramedic hiring process update. We will, the first item is 2019 liability and workman's comp renewal. And I'll call up for presentation, John.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Council, Board of Works, appreciate you having us tonight. My name is John Dillon. I am Managing Director of an organization called NFP. We are a national brokerage firm across the country. We have 4,000 employees and we have revenue ending this year of about $1 billion. We are formerly, from a local standpoint, the old city securities firm. We have 40 people here right in Indianapolis. We own an agency in Carpentville, an agency in Evansville, and we have substantial revenue ourselves right here in Indiana. We are pleased today to come in and not only have reviewed all of your coverages, but have brought you forth a quote that we think is quite of interest. National agency, local content, and I think this is really a key, a jewel for a client. And Mayor, I got to tell you that your city attorney did one heck of a job with our loss control people, as did your chief of police, as did your Parks Department and your Public Works Director. Those interviews were wonderful. They came back with very positive response, which helped us to negotiate what we think is an extremely strong, extremely strong program. I've asked you to go to page six in your presentation. Oh, let me quickly give you a little background about Kevin and myself. Kevin runs our property tool office and is our lead on about 34 municipalities in the state of Indiana. Very well-known statewide, very technical, and has done a great job. Myself, I'm a former commissioner of insurance of the state of Indiana. I'm also the former chief deputy mayor for the city of Indianapolis. So what I bring to you, or what Kevin brings to you, is an expertise on municipalities. We get it, we understand it, and we're responsive to it. And once again, Craig, I can't emphasize enough the effort you gave on the loss control. It was very well received.
John, can you approach, please?
Yes, sir.
Is this the right sheet we should be looking at?
No, sir.
Kevin, what sheet should we be looking at?
It should be page six. Should be on the premium front.
You've got to go slow. I've got these things in front of me that go like that.
So it should be the last page of section. There you go, right there, Craig. Thanks.
We reviewed your policies from last year, and we took a hard, long audit on those policies. And the number that we came to that you paid last year was $356,000. So I wanted to bring your attention right out of the gate that our quote, which what we believe versus last year, has substantial coverage enhancements, is $278,000 and change, or a savings of $78,000. So Kevin, why don't you walk through coverage enhancements, and this be respectful of the public works time. And Mayor, we have all detail in our proposal to back up our quote. And also, Sandy or David, if you want to sit with us this week or next week and go through it page by page, we are more than willing to do that.
Again, as John said, be respectful of time, right? There's a lot of detail in here that we want to make sure you know. We looked at it, we covered everything. This little handout that I just handed you, this one pager, will be a summary of where we think, in review of the coverage, that we maybe have enhanced or improved coverage for the city. You know, all in all, in review of the policies that are currently in place, coverage is very good. You know, coverage is strong. But if you look here at that first line, in Travelers' Analysis of Your Property Values, we feel for full replacement costs, there needed to be some increases. So instead of quoting 14 and change, 14 million and change in property values, we're at 19.8. There you go. Right, so that's about a 35% increase in property values. Remember, John said, we've saved money, but we haven't cut that property coverage. In fact, we make sure that building is destroyed, we've got the limits to be able to replace it. A small amount of animal mortality, we noticed that to be at 16. Again, in loss control visits, we found out there's three police dogs, so we tripled that and made sure that we could cover 16 for any one dog, but three. That next section that I left together was deductibles. We've pretty much lowered deductibles across the board. So your property deductibles currently at 10, we brought that down to 5. Flood, an earthquake, or 100, we brought it down to 50. Inland marine, I think is one of your bigger ones, you're at 10, we brought it down to 1,000. You know, so when we think of inland marine, you've got equipment moving around. Sometimes that equipment's not worth $10,000, right? But it might be a 6, 7, 8,000 dollar Kubota backhoe. You know, $10,000 doesn't cover that one incident. $1,000, now you're getting some money back. And then my next three, actually, the next five would be more for liability protection. So protecting against tort claims, employment practices, back wages. We didn't see coverage in the summary that we had. We do have that now. So again, somebody files wrongful termination, you guys are owed to pay back wages, we've got coverage for that. Your pollution coverage right now is a $50,000 accidental overspray. Our pollution coverage is a full policy limit of $1 million for both the accidental overspray, for your chemicals at the pool, for the things of that nature, again, from a liability standpoint. Defense expense on injunctive relief, so if something's brought to you guys, and they're not asking for money, they're asking for injunctive relief, we will defend that. So that's the coverage that we saw now. Zoning disputes, this is going to be minimal, right? I see no coverage now. We have it, we have coverage if it doesn't rise to the level of taking private property for public use. So basically, I think they're saying no eminent domain, they're not going to protect you against that. But if you've got a couple parties and you've got a zoning issue and somebody wants to sue you over your zoning rules, then we pull in some defense. And then lastly, and I think this is, you know, big picture may never happen, but from an umbrella standpoint, you've currently got a $4 billion umbrella that goes over your entire bucket of coverages. General liability, auto liability, your professional liability, law enforcement professional liability. With Travelers, this is carved into two buckets. So it's still $4 billion, but one $4 billion bucket protects general liability and auto liability. The other $4 billion bucket does police employment, police professional, and public officials professional. So again, the example I give, those numbers and names don't mean anything. Let's say we have a wrongful death suit against the police, and for some unknown reason, it's a $5 million claim. For the rest of that policy year, you're out of liability coverage. Under this split limit, that would fall under the aggregate on the specialty coverage. You'd still have your aggregate on the general liability to be able to pay a slip and fall. Department of Public Works runs into somebody's car, whatever the case is. No offense to Department of Public Works, that might say that ever happens, but that's the example.
Would it also apply to the paramedic?
Correct. In conclusion, and we're certainly open for questions, we bring you in major, national, seventh ranks brokerage firm in the United States with local content, born and bred in Indianapolis. My home was exactly 17 minutes from City Hall. You'll have my cell phone. I will be the direct contact. If indeed something happens, we'll be on site. Secondly, because you're a jewel, we thought it was appropriate to bring in the heavyweights, Travelers, Chubb, Liberty. Those are your major carriers in the United States. They obviously thought the city showed them well, like we thought it did. That's why we came with the ability to negotiate such a strong premium, and also the additional coverages. We stand ready for questions, and we're just being conscious of your time. We can go all night if you like.
Well, Liberty Mutual, on the personal line side, I know for a fact, and I'm talking personal lines, not commercial or what you guys are offering, TENS-DEP. Let's put it this way, TENS-, I've seen some policies where in very small writing, they put on their first-year premium 30% increase. And I know you've had to see that, because I know how Liberty Mu-, used, now, I don't know if they do that now, but they used to do that. I had them take several of my homeowners' auto, and at the bottom of it, it was in very fine writing, you couldn't see it, and I would always point out to them, how are they on a commercial side?
On premiums?
Yeah. Well, on coverages, what happens next year with them?
On your cost. Let me go to our stated average. In 2016, our average premium increase on all 34 of our municipalities was 2%. In 2017, it was 1%. This is commercial insurance. I hear what you're saying on the personal. We have never experienced that with Liberty Mutual, and that's why you have the size of our firm, sir, because we have a little leverage to keep those prices down.
And David, if I could speak specifically, school, Danville Community Schools, we moved to Liberty, they expressed that same concern. We moved them there three years ago, they're still with Liberty. Premium has actually gone down all three years. So we're not going to stop after this first attempt. We're going to work with your staff throughout the year to continue to analyze, where is coverage appropriate? Was lowering the deductibles the right thing? Where do we go? And again, we've got, like John said, over 300 markets to go to to make sure Liberty knows that's not, that's not a feasible option.
300 markets, David, plus a large operation in England itself, so if Liberty backs up on us, which we don't believe they will, we've got other spots to go to and price.
Kevin, can you talk, walk us through pollution coverage? What's that?
So this is pollution liability. So let's say your street department is out killing weeds and landscaping, you know, the sidewalk, and they spray somebody's yard, and they want you to then reseed, you know, refertilize their yard. We're going to have that coverage, okay? So this is, this is third-party, right? So this is not cleanup. There's a separate cleanup coverage under the property, okay? But under the liability, we've got the full policy limits available for overspray, for use of road chemicals. So again, as we're treating roads, if there's some, you know, somebody alleges damage because of that, and then, of course, your pool chemicals, which I know you don't have pool chemicals, but that's included in that.
How about cyber, cyber liability?
Yeah, we used Chubb on that. We think they are front and center, number one. Typically, if you run around and ask nationally who's best on cyber, you're going to hear Chubb, you're going to hear Beasley, you're going to hear Travelers. We think Chubb is the best. One of the reasons that we think they're the best is they have a zero-retention incident response coach. So you guys come in here one morning and you're locked down, and somebody wants, you know, 50 bitcoins or however many bitcoins they want these days, I don't know that. You've got an 800 number, and you can call at no charge to you, an incident response coach who can start logging you through, what's the proper response, how do we respond, can we recover your data without response? Again, no cost to you, totally third-party, protected under client attorney privilege, right? So it's not ever going to get back to anything that's going to hurt you guys. So while their coverage form, we think, is outstanding, second to none, we really think it's the fact that they can respond. One of the cases that they gave us was, they had a company that was actually down for like four days, with their IT firm trying to get restored, finally decided they needed to call. And when they called this first response coach, they had him back up in two hours. Because, no offense, but the best IT guys I know aren't seeing as much as this conglomeration of Chubb IT people are seeing.
Counselor, they also have gone to the extent of now purchased a law firm in New Jersey that are IT experts, and that law firm specifically handles as the claim adjuster to pick it off. And they're excellent, and they give very, very strong advice, by that being. And we've had great success with them.
And if you go to Section 5, you'll see the limits. So we've mirrored the limits that you've got currently, a $2 million aggregate, $1 million per occurrence. We've got full prior acts, right? So anything that may have happened that we don't know about that becomes an incident in the future, we've got taken care of. You know, again, we're covering business interruption where they've got the system locked down. We're covering an accidental distribution of your, you know, sewer and water customers' credit cards, all the response fines, things of that nature.
Other question?
On the work comp, our experience mod is 0.94.
Correct, sir.
Is that up to date?
It is up to date.
That's a pretty good experience mod for us, I would think. Knock on wood, yeah.
David, have more? We can drive that down?
Oh, I know, yeah. I imagine at one time it was over 1, but, and the figures, the salary figures are all where they should be.
Did you guys use 18 or 19 salary figure?
We used that book you gave us, that's probably 18.
That's what I'm assuming, so when I say up to date, it would be up to date at the present time, but not next year's figures.
But they're also taking last year's figures from the other companies, correct?
Right. I'm sure the other company is using the same number.
As I stated, we're available this week, we're available next week, Mayor. Anybody that's calling for work, wants to sit down and go through it line by line, we're available to do it.
Thank you.
Board, have any further questions?
I have none, thank you.
Dave?
Well, I guess on the, yeah, maybe I should sit down. Yeah, there it is, never mind. I see it now. No, I see what I needed. It's in there.
Mayor, you good?
Yeah, I, if the Board has no further questions, I appreciate your, your interest in bidding for insurance, and I will probably call you so I can sit down and talk with you. We don't meet again until the 17th of December. I know that it renews on the 19th, so I don't, I'm going to advise the Board that we do not make a decision tonight. We look at this and then come up with a decision at our next meeting.
We are available to meet at your request.
But I think I will, will set a time aside to meet with you. Look, take another look at this. Thank you, Kevin. John, thank you.
I thank you both very much, and I think it's a very competitive quote, and that was my interest more than anything.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, Brent, there should be a couple gentlemen out there somewhere. Can you have them come in?
Mayor, may we stay or do we?
You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to stay, whatever you want to do.
Oh, man.
Doug, come on up. Kevin, come on up. Hurry. Randy, I'm sorry.
How are you all doing?
Good.
I thought we met.
Thank you.
Hey, David. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I'll be in another year. Just to kind of refresh your memory of who we are and what we do, I'm Ben Walker with Walker Associates Insurance. This is Randy Teltow, he's a firm of power, who is one of the brokerage outfits that we work with on the municipality. Walker Associates has been in business since 1960. We're located out on East Washington Street, 440 East Washington Street. The Walker Associates is more than that. We have, we're locally owned, Hoosier-owned insurance, insurance agency that has 100 employees here in state Indiana. But we also specialize in public entity business. I'm ahead of that department for the agency, and we've got over 30 public candidate cases, customers around the country. As I mentioned before, you know, I, on the front page, behind tab one, is a spreadsheet of the expiring premiums, compared with the renewed proposals that we're bringing forward. We're actually bringing two of them over two years this year. One is with a company you've been with for several years, which is, excuse me, Tokyo Marine or U.S. Specialty Company. And the other company is Trident on Argonaut paper. We went to market this year because the market is pretty competitive right now and kind of soft. Secondly, your experience from the last couple years has been very good. As you all know, over the past few years, we've had some tough times and picked some claims, and through all that, you know, we've always tried to work the market and try to get the best guy for the coverages that you could, you know, to bring to the town. The reason why the experience has gotten better is because of the loss control that the insurance companies have brought forth with the IBAT program in particular on the workman's comp, the training that they've done with the Food Department, Fire Department, Police Department. You know, they have worked to get the mod down. This year, the mod dropped again to, from 98 to 94. We were well north of 1.00 before, and that is because of the hard work of the safety committees throughout the city. So again, as we've tried to do in the years past, we've tried to match up the coverages that were expiring coverage with the new coverages. And then the third column to the right is the other company that we're also showing who to look at as a possible proposal. The amount of coverage on your property, you know, we increased them again this year about 4% over the expiring years to kind of keep pace with inflation. So as you can see, the coverage is going down through the, through each one of the line items are pretty much the same as we're going forward. There's, you know, we have the U.S. Specialty Insurance Company on the property coverages, and we have Travelers' Insurance on the inland marine, which is, so we can pick up some of the replacement costs for the fire trucks, and also the radio towers and the other miscellaneous equipment. We have the crime coverage of $500,000, the coverage for the crime, general liability, we have $1 million per aggregate, $3 million, excuse me, $1 million on occurrence and $3 million on the aggregate for the general liability, which is the same as what we had last year. Again, we have the employee benefits coverage, public officials liability, law enforcement liability, the auto, you know, we're the same number of auto this year compared to last year, we have 85 autos on policy. As we come down to the, get into the cyber coverage, which we added a couple years ago, and it's a $2 million limit, and all the workers' compensation, we mentioned that earlier, the amount of payroll has been up with the city from last year to this year, should increase that. Well, it's the mod going down that caused the premiums to come down a little bit. I'm going to turn this over to Randy to kind of talk about some of the different coverages within the secondary quote on the Trident quote and the Argonaut versus the UCC.
I'll give you another handout here. This is Doug referenced your loss ratio. And every year I give you these, it kind of gives you a five-year history of where you banned and where you are now, so it shows, as you can see, your five-year loss ratio is 32%. That's, that's a pretty good loss ratio for a city your size, even with some, even with some claims activity, you've been able to keep that down. To give you perspective on that, last year, your five-year loss ratio was 40%, and the year before that was 71%. Year before that was 61, and then 14, 15 years, 92%. So we were able to, as you remember, the Department of Public Works, we were able to continue pretty competitive coverage along those lines, so that's what we intend to do going forward. Trident, which uses Argonaut paper, that's a new, it's a new company for us, so we're starting to use them. We've already put up several accounts with them, and... And, uh, we're, we're pretty excited about the coverages. There's, uh, several coverage enhancements that, uh, you're gonna be getting, uh, that the ACC is not offering. If they don't offer, they don't wanna offer those coverages. But both of these companies that we're showing, we have what we call silo limits or umbrella. I think we've talked about that in the past, I'm sure you guys have forgotten about what that is, but gosh, you don't, you don't think about insurance like we do, but... Silo limits is basically, to describe it as simply as I can, is a many umbrellas set on top of each of your liability lines, each of your silos, and that would be general liability, that would be, uh, automobile liability, that would be, uh, your, uh, ethyl, one of practices, that would be public officials, and that would be law enforcement. So those five coverages each have five million dollars of coverage. Uh, there's not too many companies doing that, but most of these companies do. So that's a huge benefit to you as far as the liability limits go, as you can tell. And we've also added, as you see in the press break, and we've, uh, since the premiums have come down, we just might get opportunity time to add another five million dollars of, uh, of umbrella coverage to your, to your program. And you say, well, what do you need, what do you put another five million for? For the torque cap limit, you got five millions initially held liable for, right? And the aggregate, regardless of claimants. But that's true if you're in Indiana court. If you're in a federal court, then the sky's the limit on that. So a lot of entities, bigger entities, such as your house, uh, you should buy, have a ten million or more umbrella. Depending where you're located, four sixty-five right out here, close to Indianapolis, uh, it's, it's not out of the realm of possibility that you need those higher limits. So that's in your summary, uh, there on what that would cost to do that. Some of the other benefits that we have, that you don't have, providing that you don't have now, is this company provides a fifty thousand dollars death benefit, for the in-line of duty death benefit for that police officer, who's in the line of duty. So I think that's, uh, that those folks are, good folks out there putting their line on, their life on the line every day, and it's a good benefit for them to, to be able to have that for their families if something happens. So that's something. Another thing that we're, we're doing that you don't have now is the sexual abuse and molestation coverage that you have now, you have a million dollars, okay? That, you have that now, that coverage now will go up to your umbrella. So you're gonna basically have, uh, five million dollars of coverage instead of one. So that's a big enhancement.
I know, Randy, I have a question. Uh, on the, you said there, it's a... Additional fifty thousand dollars for the police officer for line of duty death?
Yes.
How about the fireman and the public works guy?
No, I'm sorry, it's just police officers.
All right.
I, I don't know, I, I've asked that same question, they, they do it on police officers.
Okay.
I don't know how they pick that, but that's the way it is. The sewer backup, uh, on the property, property side, liability side, so sewer backs up into your property. Right now, you've got, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars of coverage. Trident policy provides policy limits for that, so whatever that is. So if you have a sewer backup into a basement or whatever, and you have expensive equipment there or whatever, you're gonna have a lot more.
In a municipal building.
Yes, William.
Yes.
That one's at the sewer company. It blows back. It's gonna be a liability.
We've also included some, uh, that you don't have, we have optional coverage for ACC, uh, U.S. Specialty on this, but Trident automatically fills in some non-monetary, uh, coverage, like, uh, junked and related, those type of things, where they don't really want money, they just want something done. So Trident has thrown in some coverage, both on the employment practices and on the public officials for you. So that's, that's another good enhancement for you. Some companies put their defense costs inside limits. I know Trident, uh, ACC did that on your employment practices, or, I'm sorry, on your zoning coverage. So in other words, if you have that, if it's that way, the, uh, attorney's fees, as you know, are quite expensive, that's gonna erode away some of your limits, okay? Uh, I think Travelers have that on their employment practices, so the defense costs are inside the limits. With, uh, with Trident, that's, they have no coverage like that. All the defense costs are outside the limits, which is a big deal. Uh, right now, you have only fifty thousand coverage for pesticides and herbicides. Going forward, but if you choose Trident, uh, they have policy limits on that, so you're gonna have a million dollars like their display, things like that. We have added a few more coverages on your, uh, your crime. Right now, you just had employee dishonesty and robbery inside and outside. Now we're, we're throwing in ten thousand dollars coverage for, uh, fraud and, uh, forgery, yeah. Crime and forgery, you're gonna, you're gonna have coverage for that now. One other thing, and stuff finished with, with the plus here, but they also include fellow employee, uh, coverage on your automobile liability. So what that, what that gives you is two, two employees are driving in the vehicle. Without that coverage, uh, if they, the driver is personally negligent, causes injury to the other guy, without that coverage, he's part of the, you know, the suit. Uh, one other thing, that on your travel, right now, we have travelers in the marine. And we specifically had, we, you've always had that, and we've always left it with travelers, because back several years ago, Vermont Flower developed a form, and travelers adopted it, and said that you get guaranteed replacement cost for your fire trucks. Okay, you say, oh, okay, everyone has guaranteed, everyone has replacement cost for fire trucks, it's a big deal. Well, no, the, the coverages aren't the same, because with the way Travelers does it, it's guaranteed replacement cost. They can't say, oh, we found a nineteen, let's say your pumper is a nineteen ninety-five Pierce pumper. And, oh, we found a nineteen ninety-five Pierce pumper down here in, for sale in Indiana, they're, they're getting rid of it. So we're gonna buy that and add that to your new pumper. But you get a guaranteed replacement cost, we'll give you a new pumper. So that's why we will... Now, we had, we had a plan on the hand, so you gotta bring, bring your hand, so that's a strong coverage that we've got, that will continue. I think, I think that's, uh, that's all the differences or benefits that you get with going with Trident. Annual, so Trident's coverage of premium is a lot less also, so...
Any change in the deductibles?
Oh, I'm glad you said that, yeah. Right now, you have your five thousand dollar deductible on your auto liability, and Trident has done away with that, so you would no longer have a deductible in your auto liability. Again, it's five thousand dollars per claim, so...
So if an officer's wrecks, and it's clearly the officer's fault, and we go get it fixed and we turn in a claim, and there's no deductible to the city?
Nope.
But, but there used to be ten thousand?
That's what I thought it was still currently. I think it's still ten.
Oh, you're, I think you're right, it is ten, not five. Yeah, it's ten thousand, and now there'll be no deductible on your auto liability.
And that, that would hold true with any vehicle?
Yes. What's the box?
So if you go to the third page of the, uh, spreadsheet, we have, we have the, uh, grand total on premiums for the expiring premium. And then the, uh, renewing, the current coverage as is, and then the third column to the right, uh, is up to the premium, but we would recommend with Trident.
Go across, Doug, go across the line so I know where you're at.
There's a grand total on the information.
Okay. What's the, what is the first column?
First column is what, what you paid last, this is your expiring premium, three fifty-seven, uh, nine hundred bucks.
Okay, what's the middle column?
The middle column is, is the expiring coverage just as the same company that you had before.
And the renewal.
Renewal premium, which is three oh seven. And then the third column is what we can recommend, which is the Trident coverage. It would be, uh, two ninety-two Trident coverage plus the IBAT portion.
Okay.
The numbers below that are the optional coverage if you wanna pick up another five million dollars of umbrella coverage. But that's an option.
Okay. All right. Or, uh, do you have questions for Doug or Randy?
I do not, thank you.
What was the savings from last year to this year, uh, as far as premiums for the year? With who we were, are currently with, yes?
Currently with to their renewal or to what we're recommending?
What, no, to their renewal, and then I wanna know after that what you're...
Fifty thousand dollars less.
Fifty thousand.
Okay. From last year or this year?
Yeah, and then what we're recommending is an, uh, an additional, uh, fifteen thousand dollars less.
Okay, so sixty-five. Okay. And, uh, the rating on this Trident, 'cause I've never heard of them before...
Argonaut is the company.
Or Argonaut?
Yeah, Trident is the Trident name. Argonaut's the company, it's an A rated company.
Okay.
They are admitted in the state.
Okay. What's the, uh, reason for the switch?
Well, like I said, we just started doing business with Trident, so we didn't have them available before, so we've been, we've been quoting them on, uh, most of our renewals, so to see how they do. And obviously, they're, uh, interested in, in writing business. Uh, they're not, they're not a new company in the public entity, they're just new to us, so they, they've been, uh, working there for, uh, twenty years.
They gave us twenty-five percent scheduled credit on the work comp?
Yeah, that's IPAT, it's the same thing you got now.
Dave, any other, other questions?
No.
Randy? Uh, what we'll do is, uh, no decision this evening. I know that we renew on the nineteenth of December. Uh, we convene again this board, uh, but in between now and the seventeenth, when we meet again, I would like to sit down with the, uh, first group that, um, did a presentation tonight, but I also wanna afford you the same opportunity. Um, so I'll be calling you, or my assistant will be calling you to set up a time to come in. So, uh, and we'll go through it again, and, uh, then we'll come to a conclusion at the next board meeting. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Appreciate it. All right, uh, second order of business is civilian paramedic hiring process update. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. The Beach Grove Fire Department has completed its hiring process for civilian paramedics. At this time, we have several qualified applicants for our current list. I would like to ask the Board of Works and Safety for the approval to hire one civilian paramedic for our current opening. The hiring will take place in twenty nineteen, dependent upon the financial position of the city. And I state that because I had the opportunity to speak to the mayor, Clerk Treasure. Um, Clerk Treasure stated that we've not received a certified, um, budget back from the state, so he's awaiting to take a look at, um, where we stand in twenty nineteen, and we'll take the process then.
Floor's open for any questions or comments?
When will the budget be certified?
Um, don't know, still waiting on that.
Okay.
And, uh, right now, I can show you, the budget was three million one hundred forty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-seven on the sheet that I passed out to you. Uh, the expected actual is three million one hundred seventy-one thousand one hundred ninety-eight, and, which is already an increase of, uh, we've got a shortfall of thirty-some thousand there. In twenty twelve, we had thirty-two, uh, firefighters and three paramedics, no contractual. In twenty eighteen, we've got thirty-five firefighters, two paramedics, and four hundred forty-three thousand in contractual, which, uh, in twenty nineteen, it'll go to four hundred ninety-nine thousand. We've had an extreme amount of overtime, not just in the, the fire budget, but, uh, the budget right now for twenty nineteen would not afford any new civilian paramedic.
Chief, you, any response?
Um, yeah, that is correct, we have thirty-five firefighters, three civilian medics in our contract. We do have Saint Francis to help augment or EMS. We're just trying to provide the service for the city and the citizens, um, and that's what we're trying to do.
Well, what happened if you, uh, uh, did that without, with, taking it out of your budget?
Um, if we don't, um, get the approval, um, we're, we're trying to find the money within our budget, try and work with you and the Clerk Treasure, um, do this correctly, do it right above board. The fire department, you know, I, I don't set the budget, um, I, I don't do our, our revenue for, um, ambulance. Um, the city, I, I noted our revenue went up for the ambulance to one point five million this year. That's over two hundred fifty dollars from last year, two hundred fifty thousand dollars increase from last year. Um, we, we just need the personnel to run the apparatus and get that income in, um, help augment the budget, do what we're supposed to do.
But what I, what I'm asking is, if there's no new money available, can you do this out of existing money in your budget?
Uh, it, we, we take a look, I believe we can do it, uh, just take some, you know, sharpen the pencil, see, see if the money's there. But, yeah, I, I think it's, it's possible.
I, I don't think there's any money in the budget, this budget even this year is terrible. Uh, there's not any extra money next year. The, uh, expected actual is actually gonna be short before we ever get started. Uh, right now, we've only got fifty thousand in the general fund that is in that actual fund until our tax money comes in, so you're gonna see, uh, the general fund going to the negative in December until we get our tax money.
Board, any thoughts?
I, I do have just a couple of comments, please. So when I, when I look at the, the information that you gave me right before the meeting, Dan, I do appreciate that. Um, when you gotta compare twenty twelve to current, there's, there's quite a bit of difference between our city, what happened in twenty twelve versus, you know, twenty eighteen. And when we say we're, we're paying extreme amount of money in overtime, is it, what is more cost-effective? To continue paying extreme overtime or paying for another, another employee?
Um, there, there's not money for either one. Uh, we had to go to the till, uh, to do an additional appropriation, I believe, for two hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh, just to get through this year for police and fire.
So when we look at actual runs and, and the personnel that we need in runs for, from twenty twelve to twenty eighteen, I mean, what's the difference in runs? Is it a lot higher and we actually need these, need the personnel?
Yes, our run load has increased since twenty twelve. I don't have that actual run number in, in front of me, um, just right off the bat. Or, or both our paramedic ambulances, um, we're doing over four hundred runs a month on average. Um, I, I did look through some of the sheets before I came up this evening. Um, we averaged anywhere from four hundred and sixty-two... We averaged anywhere from four hundred and sixty-two from the beginning of the year. Lately, the last three months, it's decreased, it was around three hundred and sixty runs. We've been running without that civilian medic on one shift. We've been trying to augment with St. Francis. We've augmented with some of our personnel, but then it takes people off the engines, and then if someone calls off sick, we're shoring the, our engine staffing. If we have to call in overtime, that increases our overtime. Trying to just meet the operational needs of the Fire Department. But the needs for that second medic truck is there, and the ambulance runs are there.
Dave, any thoughts on your end?
No, I guess I was trying to figure out what Dan and you and Bob had talked about as far as the budget, the, the, yeah, my train of thought just left. As far as meeting with somebody and that coming back in, and you haven't got it yet, what was that about?
Certified budget from the Department of Local Government Finance. In other words, if the budget we presented, they don't think it will fund. Let's say if they cut a hundred thousand, because that's what they'll do, they'll look at it and they'll say, this is all this will fund. So there could be a certified budget come back, and they could cut it by a hundred thousand. We don't know that they're going to give us everything we asked for. So if that's the case, then you got bigger issues.
I, when you presented this letter, I thought it would be, we would move forward to this after we hear in February on what's going on. And if it's not doable, then we just can't do it. I mean, that's just the end of the day.
Yeah, and, and that's pretty well, like I stated, it's dependent upon the financial position of the city. Working closely with the Mayor, Clerk Treasurer, keeping this board informed, but we, we need a plan.
Absolutely.
Need to be able to plan, anticipate what we're, our next move is, what we're going to be doing in January and February, and, and so forth.
The Chief and I both came up to the same conclusion. I mean, we'll talk about it, I'm open-minded to it, but if the money's there, we just can't do it. And I think we've acted premature on other ones, and we'll be discussing that later.
So my recommendation would be twofold. One would be to table it, or two, to go ahead and move forward only after the DLGF has approved the budget and there is, the city's in a financial position to do this. That would be my, one of my two recommendations to the board.
First of all, even if the DLGF comes back and gives us certified budget for everything we asked for, there's still a shortfall right now. So I think it needs to be tabled until after we get everything back, see where we're at. And like I say, that, that would be my opinion on it, because we already went through this process with the police officer, and now we're going to have to discuss it at the next, at the council meeting. So I don't think we need to move forward on it.
Board recommendation?
I, I do think we need to move forward, but I, I, we need to make sure, make sure what we're doing is the correct thing. So if you're saying that we need another civilian paramedic, then that's what we need. I say we move, move forward and, and, and until we get the, the certified budget back.
What, I guess my question would be, what difference does it make if we, if you move forward or it's tabled? Because if you move forward, you can't do it anyway until it's, until the.
Well, let me answer that. The last time with the police officer, it was subject to financing. Not one person came to ask me anything about it. Next thing I know, we have a sworn news, sworn police officer. So that's what bothers me about it. We don't, right now, our budget is in the negative for 2019, for police and fire both. And that's before we ever start. The general fund is going to be in the negative in December.
Any recommendation from the board?
I would say we table it until we know.
Motion to table, second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote's two oh.
Thank you.
That concludes new business, comments from board members?
I have none, thank you.
I have none.
No comments, motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at six fifty-five P.M. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our common council meeting for Monday, December the third, two thousand and eighteen. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Temple, Councilman-at-Large.
Dan Brett, Council-at-Large.
Dave Harrison, Councilman District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Deanna Mascary, Council District Two.
Elizabeth Lampin, Council District One.
Chris Duffer, District Three.
Kevin Day, District Four.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Thank you. I just want to pause for a minute and ask for a moment of silence for President George H.W. Bush. Thank you. We will proceed with special presentations. First up, our youth council, our principal, Liz Walters. Liz?
Good evening, happy December. It's my pleasure to introduce Maya McKee. She has some information to share with us. Hi, I'm Maya McKee. I'm a senior at Beach Grove High School. I'm involved in a lot of things at high school, especially like student leadership, and we're hosting a night with Santa this Friday, super excited about it. Some things that's been going on at the high school is, we just had our community Thanksgiving dinner, which was a success again. And this Wednesday, we're going to be hosting a resource fair for students, which is supposed to like de-stress and help students get involved with other things. It's our first time ever doing it. We are two weeks away from finals, kind of exciting. For choir, we're hosting the Nutcracker again on the twelfth in collaboration with the Dance Refinery on the eighth at seven P.M. and on the ninth at two P.M. Athletics are doing really well this year. The swim team is doing especially good. I know every person has beat a personal record every swim meet. Wrestling is doing well, too. Girls' basketball is two to three, and boys' basketball is three to zero, which is really good. For drama, we're having a spring play in Clue. It's going to be February fourteenth through sixteenth in 2019. That's everything that's going to be going on sooner happening now.
Any questions for us?
Did you say the name of the play?
Yeah, it's Clue.
Like the board game?
Yeah.
I think they made a movie at one point. I've not seen it, but I think the play is.
Yeah, there's three separate endings to the play.
Actually saw on our announcements today, we had like forty students go out for it. So they ended up, the auditions were so good that they ended up having two casts. So we'll have quite a few students involved in.
Thanks.
Thank you. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you too.
Is there someone from the RDC here who would like to, to report? We had asked them, the council wanted them to come back for the, present their 2019 budget and goals. So, and I know that the President, Webb, his mother is in failing health and, and I, I just, maybe that's why he's not here tonight, I'm not sure. But I, I do want them to present their budget to you because you are required to approve it. So having said that, I'll ask for a motion to table that until January.
I'll make a motion that we table their budget until we hear from the RDC.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, Mr. President. Next up on special presentation, the community safety recognition for the Beach Grove Police Department. And if the Chief could come forward. About a month ago, a organization called Safe Wise finished their computation on crime, and Beach Grove ended up being, according to their calculations, the nineteenth safest city in Indiana, the only city in Marion County. So I want to, I think that deserves some recognition. So I want to present this to the Chief and the Beach Grove Police Department and read it into the record. Safe Wise is proud to present this award to the City of Beach Grove for its officials' efforts in community safety and crime prevention. Beach Grove was ranked the nineteenth safest city in Indiana due to its commitment to the safety and security of its residents. So Chief, congratulations. I appreciate the company that did this, the organization. I had no idea they did it. They didn't contact us, ask them for information. This, I would guess, came from the federal crime reports, which shows that we're out there doing what you guys want us to do and making a good effort doing. Thank you.
Congratulations to your department.
Thanks, Chief. Council, in your packets.
Mayor Buckley? Mr. Webb is here.
He is here.
Oh, Don. Come on up. We made a motion to table until the next meeting? But come on up.
Sorry I was late, conflicting schedule. First of all, thank you all. I thank the Mayor and Ms. Lampin, because she's been at most of the RDC meetings. And I wanted to thank our board members. Tara Wolf, who stepped up and served. Keep in mind, she had a baby on a Sunday or Saturday, I can't remember which. And the following Thursday, she was at the meeting, leaving her little newborn behind. Tremendous dedication for the folks of Beach Grove. And then, you know, Ron Moats been on there, I think, seven years now. And Kathy Chapel's taken ten thousand meeting minutes. And again, she, she doesn't necessarily like it, but she does it for community service and to support our community. Those two have just been real, you know, a long time, and I just can't thank them enough for what they do. I mean, again, it's, it's an important job, it's, but, you know, like I say, the pay's not great and the hours can be long. But to go over 2018, we set goals in seventeen of doing signage. And if you all remember last year at our presentation, I showed you the drawings for signage grants, our signage that we were going to put on the four sixty-five Emerson exit. Our thoughts on that were to improve the image of Beach Grove and to help our brand so that when people saw a nice exit, because one of the things I've noticed, we traveled a lot this year, is that when you see a nice highway exit, you're more inclined to get off there to go to a restaurant or a store, whereas when you drive through those shady areas where things look a little dilapidated, you're more unlikely to tell the kids to hold it and head down the road to the next exit. So I think the most important thing we can do is obviously a positive image for Beach Grove. And I think putting these signs or doing the signage will go a long way in helping that. So for 2019, we've authorized forty-four thousand dollars to Kevin Parsons Group. They have begun the initial design, and they will lay out the initial plans. And then once we do that, we'll look to construction of these signs. Again, we're going to probably do it in phases, but we got the two welcome signs, which will be in the exit, and what we'd like to do is eventually have a big stainless steel facade over four sixty-five that'll also point out, you know, you're passing by Beach Grove. I, you know, thousands of people drive four sixty-five. And again, seeing that sign, and we'd be the only exit in Emerson, in Marion County that would have this. We'd be unique, and, you know, we need to work on that because, you know, you look around at like Fountain Square, and the houses around it are going up in value. It's an attractive place to be. Irvington, you know, these revitalizations, you know, it helps with a positive image, and that's what we should be striving for in Beach Grove. The other thing we have agreed to or are going to do is we're going to fund ninety, I want to say ninety-six thousand dollars next year for one of the final phases of the Greenway. The Greenway is interesting in that it began back in the early two thousands as an idea, but they started it, then spent the money on it, and kind of let it die. And then when I got the opportunity to serve on the RDC, I said that was one of my goals, was to get a Greenway for Beach Grove. And by 2020, I think in June or July, we will start to have that Greenway. And just to keep in mind, we, when I name off Center Grove, Noblesville, Westfield, Carmel, Speedway, Indianapolis, Plainfield, all of them have bike trails or greenways. We are the only city around here that does not have that amenity. And that's what people are looking for, you know, they are looking for, you know, we want to be healthier, and the millennials, the young people, they want those things. Those are types of things that add value to the community. And I think it's important, and I think we all should be excited about that, that we will no longer be the place without it. And I think we're going to have, and we're lucky because we got two beautiful parks in Sarah Bolton and Chalice Park that, and a creek, it'll be under. It's going to be a pretty Greenway, and I think it's going to be done right. The other thing I was going to point out, if I can remember, we had a get-together with Dr. Kaiser, and one of the things we talked about is TIF funds. And if you do not know, we've roughly taken a little over a million dollars a year. Now, five hundred and eighty thousand of it goes to pay off our bond debt from the Digital City and other funds that they did back in the early two thousands. But in 2022, we can retire those bonds. And we will have about eight years left, or 2030, when the TIF zones will expire and more or less the RDC will expire. Between that time and 2030, we have between eight, depending on how the assessments go, we'll have between about eight and a half and twelve million dollars of, that the RDC can spend on improvement projects. So in 2019 and the years ahead, a couple of years ahead, I think it's important to think about what final phases of redevelopment we can do with these TIFs. Because we've talked about the CSX land, we've got the St. Francis property. So going forward, I think it'll be important for the RDC, the Mayor, the City Council to start collaborating and figure out what best to use with those funds. And it may be that we don't do anything with those funds and return them back to their taxing districts. That'll, that'll be obviously the RDC and your guys' call, but it's, it's coming up on us quicker than we realize, and we need to really start collaborating on that and figure out what we want to do. It'll be important for the city. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Don, you have to go through your budget, line by line?
Oh, I do? I'm sorry. See, that's why I need the Mayor.
Before you, is Kathy Chapel still here?
Yeah, I hope she is. Yeah, she's right there, Kathy. Stand up.
I don't, I don't see her at all. Another member of the RDC, and I just saw it, most people know Kathy, but it'd be a good opportunity if you don't.
Well, basically, 2016, we've got, of course, or we got the bond payments, that should be 2019. We'll have the bond payments, and we refinanced those last year and saved a ton of money. So the Greenway work is sixty-five thousand, and that thirty-two thousand, Trent got ahold of us after we had done this, so we added that thirty-two thousand. But that's also for the environmental and all that going towards the Greenway. And then, like I say, the signage grant, we've got forty-four thousand. And that's going to cover the design and all that. There'll be more costs if we decide to go forward. I think they're talking, each sign will be around anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars on each side. The total project estimated, if we did the landscaping, which are the trees, the shrubs, the rock, and the stainless, or the steel facades on the highway, would be right around two point one million dollars. So that's why we're just doing it in small parts. So that's why we're just doing it in small parts. But again, before we go forward with that, we've gone forward with this, I would come to the city council, because one of the things a redevelopment commission can do is we can do these types of projects, but if we do the sign, we need a commitment from the city to maintain that. Because if you want a prime example, the downtown Indianapolis, they redid all those exits from McCarty Street all the way out to the airport. They put plants, they put totem poles and all this stuff. And then they didn't do, and it looked nice for about three months, and then they never did anything after that, and now it's all weed covered. So to spend the money that we're talking about, and then just let it become weed covered in five years, would be a waste of time. So I would want, before we would go forward, a commitment from you folks, the city council, that you would put money in the budget to maintain like grass cutting, planting, and keeping it looking nice. Because if we're not going to do that, then we shouldn't do this.
On the TIF district, so you're talking about Lowe's and the Walmart, correct?
I'm talking about all of them.
All of them, okay.
They will all go away.
All go away. And then what's our potential for getting new or more, there's not?
Well, I take that back. I guess, I guess if the CSX property got developed, you could maybe try to turn that into a TIF. But there wouldn't be a whole lot of money there for it. Places like Carmel, how they get TIF districts, they just annex everything around them. I mean, we don't have that luxury. So we are, we are landlocked. And we are very limited. I mean, you know, one of the things that helped us this year, or the last couple of years, is Beach Grove Station. You know, that's, that, because we lost revenue because of, Lowe's and Walmart both appealed their property tax decision. We lost about $30,000, $35,000 in income from those two on taxes, which Beach Grove Station conveniently made up for us. So while we lost from those two, we gained from a piece of property that had been unused for decades.
But to get into anything that's going to be comparable to this is going to take some big, and then the Franciscan Health property, which no one knows.
We don't know what's going on with there. That's why we want to be cautious, because I don't want to give a company money, but like one of the things Mr. Kaufman came to us with was next stop, Beach Grove, and that they're pursuing a grant. And they asked if we could help with the grant, which we said, sure, when you guys find out more, come back to us. Because a grant isn't helping one business, but any business that wanted to participate along Main Street, it would be helping. And while I don't believe in giving a dime to just one business, like that's why I hated the Amazon deal, but these businesses got together as a group, and they're putting money in the game. They're willing to put a quarter of the money they want into fixing up their stores, which again, will work for Beach Grove. And that type of stuff I like. But like I say, we've really focused on community. And next year, it wouldn't shock me if the Parks Department didn't come to us and ask for help in replacing the old playground at Chalice Park. And again, I think parks, Greenways, and those types of things that help the average folks are important.
The citizens see.
Well, the citizens see it and they use it.
They use it.
And what always bothered me is the idea of paying property taxes to a company you don't work for that, that comes into Beach Grove. You know, you don't work for them, but you're paying for them to be here. You're paying for their police, their fire. And, and that's where RDCs have gone horribly wrong, is that they'll, they'll give all this money away to these companies, and sometimes the companies don't even fulfill that. And one of the interesting things is like the CSX property, I'd be wary about giving money to any company that came in here, because let's say they employ 400 people. The headlines are great, 400 people employed at Beach Grove, but do any of those people even live in Beach Grove? And that's what you see with a lot of these deals, is that the town that has to pay all the money to the business to come there, often the people don't live in that town that you, that work for the business. So that's why I always believe in being very careful with how we spend taxpayers' funds in these funds. And when the library, or anybody comes to us and say, can you help us? If there's a legal way under RDC law to help them, I will. That's why we've worked well. I wanted to thank Dr. Kaiser, too. He stepped up and volunteered to be the school board member. And as I said in the past, we've tried to work with the school board to give them money when they've needed it, like we helped on the exit street over by the high school. And there've been a couple of other projects we've helped on in the past. But I think the RDC, like I say, I think we've done a fairly good job of protecting folks' money. And the biggest thing is, we've, we've paid what, I think when I got in here on 13, it was about a $6.5 million debt, down to this, less than about two now. And there's light at the end of that tunnel that we'll be able to scream, we're debt-free in a couple of years.
So when you say that at the end of this TIF money, there's no need for an RDC to continue?
There'll be no money.
Okay.
Like I say, in 2030, all those TIFs go away. They're, they're sunsetted. So, and, and the way it works is TIFs, I think when they're put in, they, they get their money off the future value of a property. So like, say, the CSX land, if they built, say, a $10 million facility there, then we'd get, you know, 3% of the property taxes from that theoretically. And we could use that for development. But, you know, again, if you look at Beach Grove, there's not a lot of area left to develop. And one of the things I worry about that happened, you know, is, you know, the accountability of the money. And again, I worry that when we're worried about police, fire, and all these other things, roads, taking, you know, $1,080 away from those in the school, we need to have a good reason for what we're investing. And in the past, I don't know if we've had a good reason for that. And that's why, like I say, I'd like to be cautious with our funds. Because that's people's money. That's their houses that are paying for this. And, you know, they want to know when their house is on fire, that a fire truck comes there, or they call the police, we have enough police. And, you know, that's, that's what we have to weigh in these things. But like I say, we haven't taken on any new debt, and we're getting rid of the debt we have, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Lamping. And thank you for coming all those times. I know sometimes they're short, most of the times they're boring, but you suck it up and always stick in there, and I appreciate that.
I always learn something. There's always, I always learn something. Thank you for your effort and the entire board.
Well, thank you. Anything else? If not, I'd ask you guys, if you would, to approve our budget. And again, I'd always welcome you at the meetings. And as I've said, it's never a bad idea if next year, if you guys want to put a city council member on the RDC, they have a $1 million budget, I don't think that's a bad idea either. I think it's an important, it's, it's a lot of money for one volunteer committee, and I think you guys would, would benefit from that as well. It's just my thought, but I know other county, or other cities do, and I don't think it's a bad idea. But that's my thoughts. If there's nothing else, I'll, I'll leave it up to you guys.
Wish your mom well.
Well, we're hanging in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You heard their, just to recap their budget. 2016 bond payments, $513,300. Greenway work, $65,000. Crossroads engineering, $32,500 for the Greenway. Beach Grove signs at I-465, $44,000. For a total 2019 budget of $654,800.
Since we voted to table, do we have to vote to untable, or are we just going with the vote?
No, you can not do anything until, you've heard everything, you can table it until January, then vote it in January. They're not going to meet again until after you folks meet in January. So if you want to table it, just, we'll just.
Well, we already did, but.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just move on.
We've got the agenda item next month?
Uh huh. City council, 2019 appointments. You should have a one-page form in your packet that runs through your appointments for And I'll go through it real quick. For the Parks Board, you don't have any appointments for 2019. Same way with the Fire Department. Merit Board, no appointments. I want to skip over Greenscape for a minute. I want to go to Board of Zoning Appeals. You have three appointments, Mike Garrett, Don Whalen, and Julie Weaver. Their terms all in at the end of this year. All three have indicated they would like to continue to serve us on the BZA. Those are your appointments. The Redevelopment Commission, you have two appointments. Tara Wolf and Don Webb, their terms in at the end of this year. Both have indicated that they would like to continue. And then the Greenscape, Amanda Rubadu, her term ends the last day of this year. She is going to be a mayor's appointment to the Parks Board, so that leaves an opening for you folks. Sajia Fuller, Sunny Fuller, will be at the December 3rd council meeting, and she would like to serve. And I want to introduce her. Sunny, come on up. Sunny is an animal lover and a pollinator. And she would like to serve on the Greenscape, and I want to introduce her to you. Go ahead and talk a little bit about yourself.
Okay. Well, hi. I started doing the Pollinator Gardens a few years ago, and in doing that, have started saving seeds. And I have, you know, pounds of seeds that I would like to share with the city. And so I have them, and it would be wonderful if I, you know, can get permission to kind of put them in. We've started one at the community center area, around the park, we were talking about, you know, the fence at Sarah T., which could definitely use some pretty around it. And I have all of the seeds available, which wouldn't cost you guys anything for that, which I think you guys probably like that idea. So, and I guess, you know, and I've been here in Beach Grove for, actually, I graduated here, and now I've been where I'm at for six and a half years. So we're here for a little bit longer, and it would be a nice project.
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up here. Thanks.
So I would just ask that you consider appointing her to the Greenscape Commission, or if you have someone else that you would want to appoint to that. That's totally up to you folks. So these are for you, and we'll, we'll revisit this issue in January. And the last under special presentation is, we have to begin the process, again, years in to do conflict of interest, nepotism, and those types of form. And I'm going to defer to the clerk to explain it just a little bit.
Okay. This is something the state mandates to us. And so what I'll do is I will email all these to the council, to the Board of Works, the mayor, myself, any elected official, all have to fill these out. And it's just, I think contracts was the other one that was on, or there's three of them. It's, but conflict, nepotism, and contracts. And it's just to protect yourself if you've got a relative or somebody that works for the city, and you do not directly oversee them, at least the state knows it, and it keeps you out of trouble. So that's basically what it is. We've done it every year. First thing the auditors look at when they come in is these three statements.
So what we'll do, the way I envision this, is that in our meeting in January, we will sit there and fill them out and, and just in one large group, and then we'll be done with it.
I'll email them to them ahead of time, so if they want to do it at their own leisure instead of the council meeting, but we would like them all turned in at that time.
That concludes special presentations. Next order of business is reading of the minutes and approval for November the 5th, 2018. In your packet, you should have a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, November the 5th, 2018. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. No questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Next up, public comments. I'll defer to our city attorney, Craig.
Sure, we have three assigned of this evening. Susan McMillan.
First off, I would like to say, I just heard the mayor mention the different committees. And I served on the EDC committee, but they haven't had a meeting since May. And so if you guys do appoint someone for that committee, again, I would not be interested in serving, but I thank Kevin Day for nominating me last year and for serving on it the few months I did. So I came to the meeting because I'm concerned for the city of Beach Grove. I'm concerned for the financial future. For the first time in the seven years that Daniel has been in office, I am. And I don't like going back to past things, but I feel like we're going into deja vu again. I can remember a time when a council passed a budget, and the mayor blamed it on the council for passing the budget, because the city basically went broke after that, even though he was the one that told them to go ahead and do it. And I listened to the November 19th, I think it was, Board of Works meeting, and I heard the mayor say, well, the council approved the budget. Well, so here we go. So I heard today from Daniel that there's $50,000 left in the general fund. Well, I know a little bit about it now, after him serving for seven years, and I know $50,000 isn't much. And that's where all the city salaries, all the city employee salaries come from. And I can remember the struggle he had the first year he was in office. And so I'm just very concerned about that. And I can remember another reason why I say it's like deja vu. Funny that Mayor Warner Wiley's here, because I can remember when that mayor raised sewer rates so high, it was unbelievable. And Daniel and Mayor Wiley walked and passed out flyers against it. They were flyers that they had gotten from the jewelry store up there, where Frank Masquerie had printed them off and stuff. And so I kind of feel like, here we go again, salary increases, here we go again, we're broke, we don't have any money. Here we go again with the council that is approving a salary ordinance and approving salaries that is clearly not funded. So I just wanted to get up here and express that. Daniel, I wasn't going to come, my neighbor encouraged me to, I hope he doesn't mind me saying that. Daniel said, don't go, you're like talking to a brick, it's like talking to a brick wall. But, you know, I can remember from about 2002 or 2003, when he used to go to the council meetings every single month, and he complained every single month then, because of what they were doing, because of what they were spending, because of what was being done. And so I thought, well, you know what, I owe that to him, if nothing else, I owe that to him to come tonight and to speak my piece. I still think it's a good idea, which he disagrees with me, and Councilor Temple disagrees with me, to let the Fire Department do what they want to do, which is go totally and completely Indianapolis. I think we'd still have wonderful service. As I've told you, I have a daughter who is a police officer, and a son-in-law who's a firefighter, and they provide excellent service to the city of Indianapolis. I know that your hearts want to give everything you can to each and every one of these people that serve, because I feel the same way. There's been many times I've knelt down with my grandchildren as they prayed for their mother, who is our daughter, their father, who is our son-in-law, you know, for them to make it home and for nothing to happen to them. So I understand the heart ties to it, but I also understand you've got to be able to look at the finances and be able to be responsible with it. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Granobal.
My name's Dave Granobal, and I live at 115 South 12th Avenue in Beach Grove. I had a longtime mentor when I was much younger, who taught me that the answer is always no until you ask. Now, I don't know what you guys are going to do with resolution number eight. I don't know what the right thing to do is as far as getting bids, to see whether anybody's interested in buying the sewer. I don't think any of us know who's interested, who's going to place bids, or how much money they're willing to pay. And like I've told you before, the most valuable commodity I know of is information. So until we get all that information, everything's speculation, except for, I want you to remember this number, $1,309,196. That's what was put into the general fund, or 461,000 of it for salaries, $848,196 for pilot and ROI. It was part of the 2018 budget. And there are dollars from the sewer already for the 2019 budget that has been approved by you. Now, I don't know what you're going to do, or who's going to buy it, or how much, but I can tell you right now, if you guys made a decision to buy it, and somebody offered you the $14.5 million that I believe has been appraised at, and they wanted to close on this deal December 31st and take control January 1, your first course of action on January 1 would be to cut $1.3 million. January 1 would be to cut $1.3 million out of the budget or have revenue to replace it, because it's already in the budget. So, if you sell the sewer, you can keep funding it with the money that you get from it until it runs out. And this money's going to go up. In 2019, at the very minimal, with the 2% increase that was given in the salary ordinance, you're looking at $470,000 in salary coming out of the sewer sanitation fund. I don't know what the ROI of the pilot will be, but I'll guarantee you, it's in the 2019 budget. So, whatever you guys are going to do, Godspeed, good luck. It's a decision I wouldn't want to make. So, if there are any questions, comments, or sarcastic remarks, I'm done.
I mean, Dave, I think that, I mean, you have to understand what RFQ is, and I think you do, and that's getting information. It's potential sale. So, anytime you put an RFQ out there requesting the information that you're saying, "We need." So, that's what resolution number eight is.
Which I'm, like I told you, you never know until you ask. You know, the answer's always no until you ask.
That's what we're doing. We're asking.
But I just want to make sure that you guys understand that it's more than making a decision to sell it and who to sell it to and for how much, because it's going to directly affect the budget and the funding of this city. Councilman Templeman has talked to me and he's even brought it up to you guys. And one of the things that you guys need to look at is getting rid of the salaries out of there, because eventually it's going to be affected.
And Dave, while you say that, I think it's a good point to state that this administration wasn't the one, and I know you know this, but that is for the public, this administration wasn't the one that made us become dependent upon it. And without saying names, our former mayor Wiley also, we were not dependent upon it with our budget the same way. So, we have, you are right, though. We have become dependent upon it, not one mayor inherited and one mayor stayed away from it. And now it comes back to haunt us, because we have become dependent upon it in that way. So, I didn't want to, I wanted to say that again, because over a period of time, if we keep it, we need to find a way to wean ourselves from it.
Well, I think too, also, I wanted to throw this out there. I don't think it's anybody's particular fault. I mean, I believe the mayor shared with us at the November meeting, might have been October, in the seven years of this administration, this council, the prior council, the current mayor, they've spent almost $700,000 in repairs. So, the things are being done. St. Francis isn't here anymore. You don't hear about the basements flooding to the north of Beach Grove like we used to, because you don't have all that water flowing. This comes down to, on the sewer thing, when we're all 20 and 30, we think we're invincible. We don't think about taking vitamins and medication and taking care of ourselves. We don't maintain ourselves. And I can tell you, at 61 years old, I wish I'd paid a little bit more attention, because knees hurt, shoulders hurt, and occasionally you get that sinus headache. Well, we neglected our sewers for years. And eventually, it's going to catch up with us. So, no matter what you decide to do with resolution eight, I still think you guys need to consider the $600,000 and the $500,000 Ocre grants to repair the storm sewer and the regular sewer, which won't go into effect till July of 2019. So, it's something you can plan on until you find out whether you're going to sell it or not. I think that's the course of action to take. Thank you, good night.
All right, thank you, Dex.
First of all, let me forewarn you. I had, my eyes dilated today, so I can't see very well, and I've got a raspy throat, so I can't talk very well, but bear with me, okay? I've got some things I'd like to pass out to you before I start, and you can be looking through those as I make my comments. Mr. Templeman, I understand I have to ask you to give me more than three minutes. I'd like to have as much time as it takes to make my two presentations.
Sir, I didn't know I had that power, but absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening and tell you why I am here tonight to support Mayor Buckley's efforts to negotiate the sale of our antiquated sanitary sewer system that has plagued our city for decades. I'm not here interested in turning the city of Beach Grove over to Unigo. This system we've got has plagued our city for decades, and I would not be here this evening to support it if I didn't think it was in the best interest of the city to do that. As you know, some of these lines have been in our grounds around through the city for nearly 100 years. And they're in, they were in bad shape when Elton was mayor. They were in bad shape when I was mayor. We both did our best to improve them. Mayor Buckley has probably done maybe the most in the six years he's been mayor to improve the sewer system, but they continue to get older every day and less reliable, to the point where the system has become an arbitrotte around our necks. It's costing the city hundreds, if not millions, of dollars in revenue, area repairs, maintenance, and replacement, not to mention the costs and mess that has caused some of the homeowners and businesses in the city of Beach Grove. I will give some praise to Fairgarnas, who used to be ahead of our Department of Public Works, and others who did their best to deal with these problems. But it was a struggle then, and it continues to be a struggle today. So, you might ask, why am I here to support the mayor's proposals? Several reasons. Number one, by selling our system to a private entity who has the dollars to do what's needed to be done with the sewers, and that will relieve the city of Beach Grove from further costs and problems that seem to occur on a monthly basis. And the city won't be responsible for increasing the rates every two or three years. It also could free up these dollars to invest in much-needed capital improvements, specifically a new state-of-the-art police station and a fire station. I know some, if not all of you, have toured the police station recently. If you haven't, you need to do so. It's a total eyesore, to say the least. Keep in mind that something needs to be done to correct this bad situation. It's got to the point where, in my opinion, it's a hostile, unsafe environment that affects the morale, the chief recruiting abilities, and many other things. It needs to be addressed ASAP. A few years ago, I was the national president of the FBI National Academy, which is a training division of the FBI in Washington, DC. In that capacity, I had the opportunity to travel around the United States and in most European countries, establishing chapters of that organization. The FBI National Academy's business is to train local, county, and state law enforcement officers in police tactics. We have several of our police officers that have attended that academy. Very proud of them for having done that. I'm sorry to tell you that most of the facilities that I've visited were in very much better shape than what ours is. Sorry to tell you that ours ranks among the worst. The council, even if you go down the sale of this, of these lines, you need to find a way to fund these two new facilities. I feel it can be done. It was done when I was police chief. I'd like to tell you a little bit of a story about how that came about. I was 29 years old when I was appointed police chief here in the city of Beach Grove. Our office was downstairs in the small office there in the corner of the building that, at one time, when we finally moved out of it, had 17 police officers working out of an area about this big. We needed a new facility. A couple of years after I became chief, a friend of mine, a former police officer, Dick Ferguson, somebody who made it on deck, he was, died in the line of duty. He was responding to a fatal accident one night and had a heart attack and was dead. But we used to go across the street, there was a restaurant on the corner called Fred's Grill, and we'd sit there in the morning and drink coffee and talk over what had happened the night before. And one day, I said to Dick, I said, "Dick, you know, we've been talking about approaching the mayor about building a new police station. I think it's probably time to do that." So, we came over to my office, which was about this big, and took a yellow piece of paper, and I've got it someplace at home, I couldn't find it, and I wanted to bring it to you, because I think it's a very important artifact for the city of Beach Grove. But we literally sat down and drew out on that piece of paper what we would like to see a police station look like. I took that and went to the mayor. Elton Gates-Whitler was mayor. Most of you knew Elton, great man, kind of like a father to me. And Elton was always sitting at his desk like this, looking down like he was reading something. I don't know whether he was or not, but he looked like he was. And I walked in and, "How you doing, chief? How you doing, mayor? What can I do for you?" I never ever called Elton Elton. When I was 45 years old, he was still Mr. Gates-Whitler to me. And I said, "Mayor, you know, I've been chief now for about three years. You know the condition our facilities are in, what conditions we could work out of. You just built a new firehouse out on Churchman Avenue, and I'd like to build a new police station." Never looked up, said, "We don't have the money." So, being 32 years old, I tucked my tail between my legs and started, and walked out. Came back over to the office and stewed on it for a few more months, and I said, "Warner, I'm not going to let Elton get away with that." So, yeah, right. So, I went back over to Elton's office, and he sat with his head down reading something. He said, "What can I do for you?" I said, "Well, you know, I was in a few months ago to talk to you about building a new police station. You said we didn't have the money, and I understand that." And he said, "We still don't have the money," very emphatically. So, once again, I started to walk out of the office. He said, "Warner, come back in and sit down, let's talk a bit." He said, "How much would a new police station cost?" I said, "I have no idea." He said, "Well, again, we don't have any money, Dan. We don't have any money." So, I started to walk out again, and he said, "Come back here." He said, "I'll tell you what." He said, "This is first break in getting Elton on my side, I guess." He said, "Find out how much it would cost to build a police station." And I said, "Okay." Walked out feeling pretty good. So, I came over to the office, picked up the Indianapolis phone book, went down through architects, and found a guy by the name of Bob Hyman, who was an architect over in Fountain Square. Didn't know Bob from Adam. Picked up phone, called him, told him who I was, what I wanted. He said, "Well, you know," he said, "My firm's pretty busy, number one, and what you're asking is pretty costly." And I said, "Bob, I don't have one penny to pay you for what you do, if you do anything." He said, "Well, I wish I could help you." So, I started to leave, and he said, "Wait a minute." He said, "I will help you." And so I left, came back to the office. Couple of weeks later, the phone rings, it's Bob Hyman. He said, "Chief," he said, "I'd like for you to come to my office. I want to show you something." So, I went to his office and he had those, by the way, those are the original drawings and blueprints and rendering that was given to me, Bob Hyman, 55 years ago. I've kept them all those years. I thought they were that important. My main question to Bob was, and number two, how much is it going to cost to do this? He says it will cost you zero. That was pretty good. So, I came back to the office. I said, "How much, how much would the police station cost?" And I forget what the square footage of it is, 25, 30,000 square feet or whatever. He says, "I'm sorry to tell you, it'll be somewhere between $225,000 and $300,000," which was a lot of money then, it's a lot of money today. That same facility today would probably cost, I don't know, six, eight, 10 million dollars. So, I took those over to Elton's office, and he looked at them, didn't say much, but he got kind of a wry grin on his face. And I said, "I'm going to leave these with you, Elton," and started to walk out, and he said, "Come back in and sit down again." So, he said, "I'll tell you what I'll do." He said, "If you can go out in the community and get 1,000 signatures from taxpayers or non-taxpayers, saying that they're willing to have their taxes raised to build a new police station, we'll see what we can do." So, I went back and got the help of many, many people, maybe some of you, I don't know. But we went out and knocked door to door, and we came back with 2,200 signatures, people saying that they're willing to have their taxes raised to build a new police station. So, I took those over to Elton's office, and he said, "You did a good job." He said, "I'll talk to Dick Brown," who was city attorney back then. Dick Brown was city attorney for 40 years, by the way. And he said, "We'll see if we can't find the money to build a new police station." And they did. They were able to bond enough money to build, I think it came in at about $250,000, if I remember right. So, as the old story goes, if there's a will, there's a way, I guess. And I hope the city is able to find a will and a way to build these two much-needed police Another reason I support the mayor's efforts to sell the sewer system and proceed with these two projects is that we need to relieve ourselves of, from the continuing outpour of the hundreds and millions of dollars that were pouring into our sewer system every year, that's seen its best days years ago. I recall, maybe some of you recall, at one time, the sanitation sewer system used to be located down in our park, believe it or not, with a nice aroma floating around through our city. And one day, some of that sewage water actually got into the sewer syst, or into the water system in parts of Beach Grove. It got people sick, caused the city and insurance company, I don't know how much, to get it fixed. Well, I understand that some of the councilors may be opposed to letting go of our sanitary sewer system. It's like, it's like Unigo is going to come in and take it away from us. This is not a Unigo project. But I will remind you that just a few months ago, Unigo took over our library. So, they're out there. But this is not one of those projects. This is the opportunity for a private company to make a bid to the city on the sale of that property, or the sale of those sewer lines to the city of Beach Grove. And I think it will be good for both parties when that happens. I fully understand that this is a big decision on the part of the council, one that will impact the city for a long time, both from the selling of those lines and the building of a new police and fire station. A decision that should and must be made as soon as possible. It's a decision you have given, I'm sure, a decision you've given considerable consideration to. And I'm sure, I've known most of you most of my life, and I know you to be intelligent, well-versed, and dedicated public servants to the city of Beach Grove that will do what's right for the city of Beach Grove. And in my opinion, this is the right thing to do. I want you to do it, because I want you guys to be successful. I want the city of Beach Grove to be successful. A vote tonight by the city council will do, you've got two choices. You can vote tonight to give the mayor permission to proceed forward with the negotiations to sell that, to sell those lines to the highest bidder, and use that money for those capital improvements. and use that money for those capital improvements, which I just talked, excuse me, just talked to you about. Because I believe it's in the best interest of the city to do that. If you don't do it, I think you'll be a party to see in the rapid departure of current employees. I'm talking about the police and fire station now. Employees to departments that are up to date with their facilities. Fishers, for example, will build two new firehouses in 2020. They just moved into a new police station. I can name you Westfield, Carmel, Fishers, Greenwood, Mooresville. Plainfield has just come to mind that are in the process or have done just the same thing I'm proposing here tonight. Give the employees good facilities to work out of. I believe it's come to a point with the police station. I have to tell you, I have to be honest with you, folks. I went out there and took a tour of the police station with the chief and deputy chief. And I was looking back 30-some years when I was police chief and when we opened that new facility out there. It was a beautiful facility. It was something, we had probably 500 people come to the dedication of that facility. And they were all very proud to be part of it. And when I took a tour through that facility back in April, I think April or May, I walked out of there half-sick to my stomach. The place is a mess. Not because of the police officers, they're not messing it up. Their, their job is what's causing it to be overcrowded, be stacked with all kinds of drugs, bicycles, and guns, and all kinds of things. And rooms that we had set aside for public hearings as being used, a good-sized building, or a room about the size of this, it was set aside for public meetings and public hearings and meetings of the police and fire departments. All taken up now by file cabinets and things like that. We had a shower down in our basement. Used for storage. Dispatcher's office, Mayor Preetus to me, did away with our dispatchers, by the way. And that room now is, I think is, an officer chief, right?
Squad room.
Squad room. It's a mess. And it needs, something needs to be done about it. I just don't think the people in Beach Grove are willing to sit back and watch that continue to deteriorate. I hope they're not. That's about what I got to say tonight. I'd just like to close by, some of you don't know me from Adam. I'm 82 years old, soon will be. I've lived in Beach Grove for 82 years. I've served the city of Beach Grove for over 47 years in every capacity, elected and appointed, except school board, including police chief, mayor, city council. So I hope I live long enough to see what I proposed this evening, gun to fruition. Want to close by wishing everybody a Merry Christmas and to the council, a happy but probably very interesting new year.
Mayor Wiley, I have.
Thank you.
Mayor Wiley, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Over here. Hey, Mayor Wiley, can you tell us what year this, this police station?
That, that was done in 1973. Groundbreaking was 1973.
And that's the current station, correct?
That is the rendering that Bob Hyman gave me of what he thought the police station was. And it's exactly what it looks like.
But that's our current station, correct?
Yes.
And then the capacity of police officers, when you, the capacity, the number of police officers when this building?
I think the best I can recall, and I've got a picture someplace up there, I think I counted 17 policemen.
And how many do we have now?
Thirty.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
We've doubled.
And we have now, coed is right, correct?
I'm sorry?
So we have coed now is right, correct? It was not built for, it was built for, we didn't have female police officers when that was?
Well, I'm proud to tell you, I was the first police chief to hire a female.
You did, okay.
Yeah, we, we just had one, I don't know how many you've got now, chief, how many you have?
Three.
Three.
Thank you.
And I'd be remiss to you if I didn't, and I apologize to the people from the fire department because I just don't know as much about the fire department as I do about the fire, about the police department. That's my whole life, dealing with police officers throughout the world, actually. So I, I didn't say much about you, but you guys need a new facility, because your facility is actually older than ours. It was built about three years before the police station was built. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank and compliment the, on three occasions, I think it was, that the fire department responded to my house when my wife was dealing with terminal cancer. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it might be a coincidence, I know she has the same last name as our city attorney. Is that?
No, my son is the city attorney.
That's it, Mayor.
That concludes public comments?
Yes.
Anybody desire to speak that didn't sign up? If not, we'll move to committee reports. I did not hear from the ABC. You should have Greenscape Commission in your, with you. Same way with compliance and public safety, you should have a copy of their report. The last report is financial, Dan.
Good evening, councilors. We once again did not apply for a tax anticipation warrant for 2019. A tax anticipation warrant is a short-term fix for a long-term problem. In October, we made a lease purchase payment on the Skidster in the amount of $7,892.73. In November, there weren't any payments due. In December, we have a lease purchase payment due on the senior bus in an amount of $5,630.98. And we also have in 2015, a revenue bond payment due in the amount of $34,478.15. The stormwater fund balance at the end of the month was $227,478. The general fund balance as of November 30, 2018 was $50,001.16. I have applied for a loan in the amount of $260,000 using the Help Indiana program through the bond bank for air packs for the fire department. The total for the air packs is approximately $310,000, and the city will put a down payment of $50,000 toward that, which was budgeted for the upcoming year. In early November, we completed an audit with the state board of accounts for the years 2014, 2015, 2016, and 2017. It began in October and was expected to last until the end of the year. However, with the information provided quickly and efficiently, they were able to complete that in a much shorter timeframe. Because the audit was completed in a shorter timeframe, the cost will be less than the $14,500 they originally quoted us. The results of the audit will be released in January. I continue to warn the board of works, council, and mayor against overspending and over-hiring what the budget will support. I have stated over and over again, this is dangerous waters you are treading on. I have included the balance for the general fund, which is $50,001.16. You will see that fund roll over into the negative for a time in December until tax money arrives. It will be worse next year because you have approved a salary ordinance that is not funded. I just want to make sure you all understand this. So for my last year, I will reiterate this. It reminds me of the first year I was in office and so concerned about enough money to get through that year. Thanks to the website volunteers who've continued to keep it updated at no cost to taxpayers, financial reports, debt service, bank balances, and more can be found on the city website at www.beachgrove.com. The bank balances are listed below. And the corporation account has $3,154,351.88. The utilities, $511,091.29. As always, if you have any questions, my door is always open. Thank you, respectfully submitted Dan McMillan, our treasurer, city of Beach Grove.
Questions for the clerk?
Chris, did you have any comments on the review audit that we attended? I didn't know if you wanted to say anything.
I don't know how much I can say since the results won't be released until January.
Okay.
I think I'll just not comment until then.
Well, I was going to, but you now scared me, so I won't. Nothing, nothing bad that we know of in that, in that regard.
No, they asked, they are the first ones to release that on their website. And as soon as they do, it will go on the city's website. There is nothing there to hide.
That'd be good.
We'll move to unfinished business. General Ordinance 17, 2018 is up for approval on second reading only. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
You got it, Dan?
No. Here we go. Thank you.
General Ordinance 17, 2018 is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordnances for the city of Beach Grove concerning through streets and stop streets. Whereas often drivers use 23rd Street as a route to get from Churchman Avenue to Southern Avenue and the neighborhood to the north. And whereas although the speed limit is posted, drivers, for the most part, speed through this area. And whereas a bus stop is located at 23rd and Detroit, and the neighborhood has an abundance of young children in that area. And whereas at least one area resident has approached the council representative for this area, asking for help with slowing down traffic. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordnances for the city of Beach Grove to address traffic schedules. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the common council desires the following amendment be added to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordnances for the city of Beach Grove. Add the following to Chapter 77, Schedule 2, subsection A, intersection 23rd and Detroit. Controls description, stop sign, westbound Detroit, northbound 23rd, and southbound 23rd. Now therefore be it affirmed that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordnances for the city of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordnances and no other chapter. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this council, that this ordinance shall go into effect 30 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president Protem, tested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you. General Ordinance 17, 2018 is up for approval on second reading only. At this time, I ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion, General Ordinance Number 17, 2018, second read.
And a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on third and final reading at the next scheduled council meeting. Thank you, council. General Ordinance Number 18, 2018 is up for approval on second reading only. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 18, additional appropriation. Where it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than originally appropriated in the annual budget. Now therefore, section one, be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council, Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, Indiana, that for the expense of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purpose specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Fund name, Public Safety Fund 170, Department of Public Safety 170. Major budget classification, personal services. $275,000 is the amount. The amount approved, $275,000. Total for Public Safety 170, the amount is $275,000. Amount approved, $275,000. Whereas the Public Safety overtime extended the budget in the Public Safety Fund 170, there's an additional appropriation must be requested. There is money in the 170 fund to fund this additional appropriation.
All right, thank you, Dan. General Ordinance Number 18, 2018 is up for approval on second reading only. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
And a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, council. General Ordinance 18, 2018 is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 18, 2018, additional appropriation. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than originally appropriated in the annual budget. Now therefore, section one, be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council, Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, Indiana, that for the expense of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purpose specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Fund name is Public Safety 170. Department, Public Safety Fund 170. Major budget classification, personal services. Amount, $275,000. Amount approved, $275,000. Total for Public Safety Fund 170, amount, $275,000. Amount approved, $275,000. Whereas Public Safety overtime extended the budget in Public Safety Fund 170, therefore an additional appropriation must be requested. There is money in the Fund 170 to fund this additional appropriation.
Thank you. General Ordinance 18, 2018 is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. That concludes unfinished business, carried over from the last meeting. Under new business this evening, we have two items. First is Resolution Number 8, 2018, quotes for the sewer utility. And I would like to take you through this resolution and read it while we go. Resolution Number 8, 2018 is a resolution seeking approval to obtain quotes to, one, see if there is any company or utility group interested in purchasing our sanitary sewer system. And two, to determine what an interested company or utility group is willing to agree to pay to purchase our sanitary sewer system utility. Whereas in 2025, the city of Beach Grove will be charged $2.48 per 1,000 gallons for the treatment of wastewater generated by Beach Grove Sewer Works customers. Equalling, equating to a cost of approximately 2.1 million. to a cost of approximately $2.1 million. This year, we are charged 78 cents per thousand. In next year, in 19, we are charged 97 cents per thousand. In 20, we're going to be charged $1.17 per thousand. In 2021, we're going to be charged $1.41 per thousand. In 2022, we are going to be charged $1.70 per thousand. In 2023, we are going to be charged $2.02 per thousand. And in 2024, we will be charged $2.25 per thousand. When we reach the 2025 plateau, we will, if you divide that figure by the number of customers we have, we will be required to charge users of the Beach Grove Sewer Works $67.19 per month just for the treatment of wastewater, not anything else. Whereas in a recent review and assessment of our sanitary sewer system by both Westler Engineering and Shrewsbury and Associates, revealed that approximately 10% of our underground piping has been in service for more than 75 years and has a replacement cost of approximately $6.3 million. That's just what we currently have right now. I don't know what is, within the next two years, next five years, I don't know how much more exceeds 75 years. I would have to research that. Whereas a recent assessment of our sanitary sewer system for value purposes indicated that the value of our sanitary sewer system may be decreasing by as much as half a million dollars per year. So since 2012, it may have decreased by as much as $3.5 million, yet we've pumped over $600,000 into it. Whereas it is estimated that up to 40% of the wastewater that Beach Grove Sewer Works customers pay to have treated is actually groundwater, not generated by Beach Grove Sewer Works customers. So in 2025, if we reach that plateau, we may be charging Beach Grove Sewer Works customers up to $840,000 to treat groundwater. Now therefore be it further, or be it affirmed that the common council for the City of Beach Grove desires to see if there is any interest by any company or utility group to purchase our sanitary sewer utility. And the common council also desires to see what company or utility group is willing to pay for the purchase of our sanitary sewer utility. Now therefore be it further affirmed that the common council instructs the executive officer of the Beach Grove Sewer Works Utility Mayor to develop and publicly advertise a request for quotes for the potential purchase of the sanitary sewer utility and present the quotes to the common council for consideration. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this resolution only applies to the sanitary sewer system. Other services provided through Beach Grove Sewer Works Utility, including stormwater utility and trash pickup, are not included in these quotes. Now therefore be it further affirmed that this resolution shall go into effect immediately after passage by the common council, signed by the council pro tem, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor. The only thing I'm asking you to do is give me permission to proceed, to see who is interested in purchasing the utility, and have them come in front of you and tell you what they would be willing to pay for. That's all I ask this evening. This isn't going to happen tomorrow. I'm looking at February or March. It just doesn't move that fast. And I'll open the floor up for any questions or comments.
I have a, I have a comment. I have no problem in voting for this, just as I had no problem in voting for the value of the system or estimates, because I think it's important. Like mentioned, unless you ask, you're not going to find out. But some of my regards, when you go back many years, the, our system did not pay the salaries that it does. So I just want to say, that's my word of caution. I think we should go forward, but I just, that is my, my concern is, it is a budgetary year in and year out, that it is, it pays salaries. So I just wanted to make that comment. I think we should go forward. I think we need to find out information. You cannot do anything more than that. I just want to make that statement. That's all.
I think just because we get information, somebody is interested, a person, we don't have to accept that.
Right.
Yeah, it's up to the council, it's up to, it's up to talk to the people in Beach Grove to see what they think. I do know that if, before too long, when some of these pipes, sewer systems start giving out, we could, we could be in deep trouble in the City of Beach Grove because the cost is going to be a rebear. And a lot, I do know, one of the places I talked to, at Soldered Utility, they did get some of their sewers replaced and fixed, but there's other things that happened in that city that was a negative. So, but we need to talk to some of the cities, have them come in and tell us what has happened to them since they sold their utilities.
So when, when the 10% of our underground piping is at least 75 years old, that replacement of just that 10% is 6.3 million. That's, you're talking about just, that's the potential of just that 10%. So we, we get videos, we get, you know, correspondence from Phil Gorganus, you know, multiple times. And his view is that there's a lot, the problem's a lot deeper than 10%.
Well, that doesn't, 10% of the underground piping has lived its life expectancy. That doesn't mean it's going to fail.
Right, right.
It could last another 10 years, 20, who knows? But it's there.
It's there, yeah.
And whether you are a, whether we sell the utility to another entity or we stay in the business, our rate is going to go through the roof.
Who have anything to say about that?
No matter who, who has it.
And the sale doesn't, the sale doesn't eliminate that potential for, for this increase, and that needs to be made clear. And that's just nothing we can do about it.
And I had a pretty, a couple of good examples. And I think the Pro Tem explained this better than I could have ever thought. At the last, we were talking about it, and he said, "All we have is old pipe." That's so true. That's it. And it's subject to failure. And something that was ironic, and the public works director brought it to my attention, is we are getting bids for liability insurance. So the, one of the companies that's bidding on the liability insurance was called out to DPW and had some, you know, really good questions to ask the director about how they do business and all this stuff. And they started asking about the utility, and the sewer utility. And they said, "Tell us about sewer utility," he was talking about it. And they said, "Well, tell us about your treatment plant." And the director said, "We don't have one." And they said, "What do you mean, you don't have one? You don't have a water, you don't have a wastewater treatment plant?" "No." "No." So I just thought that was kind of ironic. But anyway, we've read Resolution Number 8 into the record. I don't know if there's any other questions or comments.
I have a question. So I mean, one thing that sticks out to me is the 40% of groundwater actually going into the sewer system. And this may be a lack of my understanding of what the pilot payment is, but is that payment a percentage rate of the total payment we make to?
What it actually is, is payment in lieu of taxes.
It's based on the, it's based, it's a percentage of what the utility's value is. So when the utility's value goes down, the pilot payment goes down.
Okay. All right. I was just saying, if it was a result of the revenue, I mean, if we fix the 40% leakage, then we're going to reduce that by a percentage, you know, it's.
But then you also have to take into consideration these events, these heavy rain events that we have nothing to do with.
No, I know that. I'm just saying that if we, never mind. You answered my question. Thank you, Dan.
The 40, the 40% waste, our groundwater comes from the EPA. They're the ones who calculated this statistic for us. And I don't know if, it doesn't matter who owns it, it's, you're never going to solve that problem. It's always going to be there. But the difference is, and this is why I opposed it as a private citizen, is because the rate increases because we are, in our calculation of how we bill, we calculate everybody's usage and then determine it from there. Whereas if I was a customer of Aqua or American Utilities or American Water or Citizens Energy, it would only be, my bill would only be based on what I used in my home. That's the difference. Any other questions or comments? It's been read into the record. At this time, I ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 8, 2018.
I'll make said motion to approve Resolution Number 8, 2018.
I'll second. And then we go individually, beginning on my right.
Aye.
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 Passes 7-0. We will start the process, but like I said, it doesn't happen tomorrow. I'm looking at February or March of next year. Thank you, council. Last order of new business is when we passed General Ordinance Number 13, we did not have you sign your vote. Everybody who was there voted yes. So, Dan, do you have yours?
Yes.
Okay.
Jim, you was absent, so you don't need to sign.
That concludes new business. Council comments, beginning on my left, buddy.
Well, thank everybody for being here, and those who spoke, Dave Grenoble and Susie McMillan, and definitely always an honor to hear from Mayor Wiley as well. And just wish everybody a upcoming Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see everybody back in January. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for showing up and have a great Christmas. Remember the reason for the season.
Thank everyone for coming. If you haven't been out to see our high school basketball team play, you might want to do it. They're pretty good.
Support Mac.
Coach English has been at a couple of games. He wasn't at the away games, but he was at the home game. But the kids played their heart out, and so far, knock on wood, they haven't lost. And they got a game Friday and Saturday. Of course, one of them's away and Saturday's at home, so come out and support them. It's a fun, fun time.
Vito?
Wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah. Thanks for coming out tonight, and see you guys next year.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Mayor Wiley. Thank you, Mayor Wiley, for your inspiration. We always appreciate you. Everyone have a safe, peaceful holiday season. God bless.
I'd like to thank the people that spoke, especially Mayor Wiley. It was a very interesting discussion, or not discussion, but an interesting story, and I appreciated it. I'd also like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's it.
I want to thank everybody for coming and wish everyone a Merry Christmas also. Thank you. One last thing, in your packets, you should have received a copy of a letter from the Amtrak Chairman concerning the Beach Grove facility. We have received a grant from the Indiana Department of Transportation for $90,000. We're doing a small project over on South Fourth to end the year, so that's going on. We have reapplied for our Indiana Clean Community Challenge Annual Survey, and we'll re-up for another four years. And the final two things was, you should have in your packet a copy of the, we amended the salary ordinance for the clerk's office and a title change for the police. That clean copy is in your packet now. And then the General Ordinance 13 for the rental ordinance, which the only thing we ended up doing was getting rid of the old ordinance. That clean copy is in your, in your packet as well. So we're caught up, and we are not scheduled in the agenda for the council. We are not scheduled to meet again until Monday, January the 7th, 2019, unless the clerk, Dan, tells me that we need to meet for whatever reason financially. Other than that, we don't meet again until, yeah?
I would like to bring up the white elephant in the room, and that is the police officer that was hired and is not budgeted for.
Go ahead.
Well, I just, I'm making a statement. It isn't not in the 2019 budget. The numbers I have already show them 60,000 short before the police officer was in there. And now with Rita's numbers that she sent over, she even showed a little bit higher shortage. And we can't be hiring people we don't have money in the budget for. And I brought this up in the Board of Works, now I'm bringing it up to the council.
When the board approved it, whenever that was, November or, I don't remember, it was under the pretense that the budget was funded for this year and next. And they had 34 and 35 officers budgeted, both in 17 and 18. We kept referring to it because we couldn't find the 35th officer. So our pretense was, it was funded, they told me it was funded, so we moved. If they would have told me that it's not funded, we wouldn't have proceeded. But it was funded, they told me it was funded, and we moved on it.
My statement to that is, I never told you it was funded.
No.
I told the Board of Works it wasn't funded.
I'm talking about?
Well, the citizens of Beach Grove did not elect the police chief and deputy chief as clerk treasurer.
Can I, can I throw out something as, as a member of the Board of Works? In 2016, we, this council voted for the two officers. It was passed. In 2017, there was no officers put in place. And at the end of the year, Dan told the chief, "Hey, you guys didn't use those two officers. Here's a hundred and some thousand if you want to use it to buy a police car." And to me, the way I'm, the way I looked at it was, and I may be wrong, I don't know how, how you fund money or whatever, but if that money was there in 2017 for two new police cars and not two officers, 2018, the money was there again. They hired their first officer in August. There's seven months of salary that was never paid. They hired their second officer that was approved in November. There's at least 10 months, maybe more, of money that was never paid. Now if I had those two up, you're, you're well over $50,000 of the, of the money that was put in for the, the equalization of the police and the fire, the 50,000. And why couldn't that money be moved over to next year? It was for the, the police cars. And, and shouldn't that money for those two officers been in the budget for 2019? been in the budget for 2019?
I, I don't understand the sense in that.
And we pay, and every year, we've paid out money for the, the overtime and things like that. So I, I guess I'm, I'm, in my mind, why, why couldn't that have been done?
First of all, Dave.
It's in our budget repeatedly.
I guess my question is, why were this brought up thirty minutes ago?
But at no point has Dan showed us any number. He always said, "Hold on, it's my turn."
All right. Soon as you're done, I'll.
It's my turn, Dan, let me talk.
Calm down there, Nathan. Come on, calm down.
Let me talk. How about you let me talk soon as you're done? I'm speaking right now. At no point has he showed us any numbers. I've asked you repeatedly, I know I've asked several members of the council, has he shown the numbers? Show me the money. When are we going to see this? I sent out an email, I got a response from Liz Lamping, I got a response from Sandy Seward. We're still waiting to see this, because we came forward, I know my deputy chief came forward and said, "Here's our budget, here's the numbers that was given, that was posted publicly, here's the salaries that we are working with," which if you look at our salary numbers, it showed a thirty-fifth unnamed officer in it for 2019, and as of yet, no one has showed us these facts and figures to back it up. It's just, there's no money.
Are you finished?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, your chief, your deputy chief, yourself, no officer has ever came to me since I've stated publicly, there is not money in there. Dave, to correct you, the police cars come out of public safety tax, you cannot pay a salary for it. But anyway, by your own numbers, it shows that you're sixty thousand short already before you had this police officer. So it's never been funded. I've said that from day one, I've said it at meetings, Board of Works, whatever, and no one has ever came forward.
I asked you in an email. You were in that email? Yeah, you were. It was a public email. I'm sure we can find it. You were all in it, and I said, "Show us the numbers." We still have not seen those numbers.
Here's the numbers, and then go by Retha's numbers she sent out at 5:30 today, that I haven't had a chance to review. I know it's more than this number. You guys do not have money for that police officer, and so I ask that he be rescinded and no officer be hired.
My question though is, Dan, you're saying that money didn't come out of that, but you specifically said in that meeting, since you didn't hire two police officers, you have a hundred and some thousand if you want to use it for police cars. Am I wrong?
Yes. And it comes out of public safety money, it did not come out of the budget. I gave them three hundred thousand, they were asking for one hundred thousand, and I gave them three. But no, it, that never came out of the budget.
Could I make a suggestion that maybe that a couple of members of the council, as well as the police department and the clerk, maybe sit down at a later moment to take a look at this?
Well, one other thing I want to pull up.
We have asked for that.
I believe he, I believe that was.
I've just brought it up, and if I can help make it happen, I'll do the best I can.
I believe that's what Officer Rinks offered us in his email, and I responded that I would be glad to do that.
One other thing I want to ask, so, it, what my point was, they hired one officer in August, not another until November. So wouldn't that money be able to roll over to next year that was unused for those salaries that were set there for the whole year?
Not unless you're going to lay them off on December 31st of 18, because there was nothing budgeted for.
See, this right here is politics.
Well, I was going to say, I think we have to be careful, we're not using money as a capital improvement. When money is budgeted for the year, it has to fiscally be just as strong, I would assume, one year from the next. So the rollover business is, is good for maybe a particular item, but when we talk about a person, I think that's a little scary, and I'm not here to, to take, to say one thing's wrong or another, I just think that if we're counting on that, that's a little chancy, I would say. But I do think we could all sit down and see where the problems are at and make sure there is a problem, or make sure there's maybe something we can resolve. I don't know, from, I've seen these meetings before, I think everybody's made their point, I just don't see where we're going to do anything but help the holiday even be that worse. So I don't think anything's going to change between now and after the first of the year.
This is politics at its very worst.
If you, if you want to, if you want to continue to talk, you have the right, I'm not here to stop you. I'm here to resolve, and if I haven't done myself as a councilperson that, I'm saying that we need to do that now, okay? Thank you.
Buddy, wholeheartedly agree. I think we should sit down with the numbers in front of us and, and work together, and just let the numbers tell the story, instead of up here finger pointing and raising voices and getting red-faced and stuff.
I agree.
We should be able to sit down and work this out, you know? So I, I hope that we can do that really soon. Everybody sit down, come to the meeting with the best of intentions, with the honest, open door, and, you know, be honest about where the money is, what the money's spent for, and what it can be used for. And if we all work through this, we're all adults, we can work through a problem. And I, I appreciate that, and I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any more comments? Motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second. Reading is adjourned. Not sure what time, Dan.
Oh. Eight forty-two.